Right now because we're gonna have that all later. So, all we needed to discuss was several change orders from the senior center. We had an administrative meeting last Friday with myself, David, David and John to discuss the senior center and the change orders with the OPM and engineers. So we'll be reporting on that at a future date. Okay? Next open meeting. But we have four change orders, I think. It's number 13, which are for cost to install custom truss hangers at steel beams as required. Oh, wait, that one, no. Was that, where's Jennifer? Was that one?
That was a note for you to read later.
That one is, yeah.
Sorry. That was what the post-it was for.
Okay, so costs associated with us removal of the asbestos containing material. That is number 8R2, and that's $53,460.19. That was for six truckloads of asbestos containing material.
And the good news was we had originally got a section like this, 120.
Yeah. It came in under.
Do you want to do them separate or?
We could do them all together. Then there is cost provide additional framing, and that's number 27. And this one isn't there yet. Then, there's one more. Let's see. Sorry. South, we did that one. Oh yeah, thank you, Jane. That's the email. Has not removal. Additional framing at the south, the north and south gable walls. And this was one, it's a $5,800 change order, but the, that we are paying for, but the architect is compensating us some money for rework on this. This was discussed at our meeting. Then we have additional framing between the dining room wall and the HVAC chases. This is line number 37 for $13,196. We discussed that at the meeting. And then we, so those are three change orders that we'd like to approve. And then we have one more item that isn't a change order, just a authorization to proceed and negotiate with the contractor.
So that $2,000 or whatever, that's just our share. So the contractor's picking up the piece and then it's not being further offset by the contract.
Correct. Correct. So what we discussed, one of the things was architect is willing to pay for some rework portions that we have to do. And we're paying for the materials that would otherwise be needed to do that. So.
Do you have number 44?
I do. I'm gonna hold that one aside right now because these are change orders we want to approve.
So I'll make a motion to approve them?
Yeah. So we have a motion to approve line items 20, 36 and 37. Any further discussion? A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have one more line item, number 44, and this was to add nine bollards due to adjustment in the grading design. Basically, we're originally gonna have the sidewalk on the south side of the building that was elevated, normal curb height, but looking at the site, doesn't really make as much sense to do that. So we want to add these, have the, that grade match the rest of the senior center grade. And in order to do that, we need to add nine more of these decorative bollards in that area.
You've grabbed it for one of them?
Yeah, just, it's like a public safety thing. And we are just giving authori- authorization to the OPM to negotiate with the contractor, but a ceiling of $12,273.70.
And my understanding that part of that change is to have the sidewalk leveled or parking lot to eliminate the trip hazard as well. So that way there was not, trying to step down from which it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're trying to do the most of the bill, just visual hinges like that are harder to see.
Yep.
There was one more question. Did you see Phil's email exactly?
I haven't had a chance to check my email.
Can I introduce it then?
Sure. Well, here, why don't we vote on this one?
Motion to approve this one.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What was the last one?
Last one is number 48, which is cost for changes for the removable exterior panel. On the east end, we have a panel posted in the east, so we can do that there. And then one of the changes to type hardware, the metal part, we should be $2,679. You'd be excited.
And so, here, that one was right, I thought that one was in here. That was, I did, I put it over here, right here. So, steel supports, hinges and hardware. So basically, in the original design, this was a panel that was just kind of a plug, let's say. And then, talking with the contractor and everything, they're like, realistically, something like that, you're gonna need a special lull or, you know, some kind of lift to get up there and remove that panel if you ever want to access this HVAC equipment. Why don't we add some hinges, add some extra framing on the outside and make it more of a hinge door? So that, so that it's easier to get it out of the way in order to put the HVAC equipment in it, or get HVAC equipment in and out of there in the future. Because all the HVAC equipment's up in the ceiling. So, so it looks like it's miscellaneous metals, door hardware, Simpson screws. And I don't know if this is the final.
Yes, that is the final because they negotiated in that.
They've gone back and forth.
Very reasonable price.
Okay. So yeah, that's number 17, and it's $2,679.88. We can, we can do that one, or we can wait until another night to do that one. This one would be good to do soon just because of the framing, but, you know.
Why don't we have that one to talk with John and Joyce? Just since we didn't talk about that.
Yeah, that one hasn't come up before. We could, we could, we could just wait. I think we meet, is it next week or two weeks?
Before, special town.
Yeah, we meet right before there, so.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that way they can be in on it. Okay. All right. So, we're all set. We're not gonna adjourn right now. We're just gonna keep going, but can pause.
Comment about the OPM?
Sure, yeah.
So, in the administrative meeting, we talked with the OPM, and it was made, I said that I would publicly apologize to him for the whole hostage comment that was misdirected because he made it clear that at no time have any of the change orders that we have reviewed been showstoppers. And he said he's never once tried to convey that to the select board. And so, I guess the information we were getting was coming from the GC and the subs, who obviously want to get done and get moving. So they're giving a different narrative than what the OPM's giving us. And he said that going forward, if there is anything that's a showstopper, he'll inform Christian and the entire select board so that we know that it's actually a showstopper rather than the kind of game of telephone that they're getting bad information. So, I'll give him credit. He did push back on some of these change orders, and he also did negotiate some compensation from the architect and the engineering firm due to their mistakes. Yeah, I just wanted to give credit where it was due and make sure that everyone knows that he is going backwards.
Okay. And a lot of the change orders that come up are things, I kind of described this in the meeting, is there's a lot happening below the surface, the OPM and the contractor, and as, you know, things come up, they bubble to the surface, they come to us, and it might look like, you know, it's just getting passed along, but there's a lot of betting between when the contractor gives it to the OPM and then we see it, so.
Right. So they're doing.
We were, the agenda items for updates in all three projects.
Oh, yeah.
So, not that they're significant updates, but on the library building project, it looks like, you know, they're, they're at a point now where they're working on bringing in the water and fire suppression. So that's moving along. And other than that, haven't heard any major issues. So, so far, so good.
I'll fill in for Joyce's update. Fire station groundbreaking last night, good turnout. She almost missed the dirt pile with her Shongaloo. But, other than that, everything went well. So, I guess supposedly the project is on back contract for the July opening of the original schedule. Yeah, looks really far along, you know?
Yeah.
It's good. It's exciting to see them all come together.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, we'll just pause now until seven?
We have, we have one bit of budget that came up.
Oh, okay.
On the cemetery project, there are a couple of extra days that may be restored, sort of the change order from the service of five hours speed here today.
Same.
Does that change order?
I have it. I have it right here.
What was the budget?
$1,500.
$1,500. Town previous approved $23,000 from CPA funds, and the current approved work total's $11,400. So, it's well within the budget.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Anything else? We'll just pause until seven o'clock, and then we'll get going with the regular meeting. Hello and good evening, everybody. Going to get our special town meeting warrant review, public forum underway here. Call this meeting to order. So, here, I, okay, here we go. So, welcome and thank you. Just, I was just gonna introduce myself real quick. If anybody doesn't know, I'm Christian Stanley. I'm the select board chair. Up here right now, we have David Nixon, the town administrator, Molly Keegan and David Phil, who are both select board members. We're expecting our other two select board members tonight, John Muskevitz and Joyce Chungalo. But I know they were, at least Joyce was attending a, a wake tonight, so she was expected to be a little late, but she'll be here. Also want to thank all the municipal employees, volunteers that are here tonight. Had a lot in the crowd. Amy's here from the finance committee as well, so if you have any questions regarding finance, director met you, Amy. And then the school for having us here tonight, setting up the room and hosting us. Thank you. Go to the next slide. I'm slow at turning these. So, just to set a few of the ground rules, the intent of this forum is to provide voters with an overview and context for the special town meeting, improve voters' understanding of individual warrant articles, and offer voters an opportunity to ask questions. This isn't town meeting, so can't get up and really speak for or against an article. If you have a specific question, feel free to ask it, but it's not town meeting where we get up and start really petitioning for an article. So we're not gonna be taking any votes. We're not providing any group or individual the opportunity to advocate for a particular article or speak against any article. We did hand out the public hearing directions, so refer to those if you have any questions. And please remember that the special town meeting is on Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 So, Article 1, general fund budget. This is in David's wheelhouse, so I will let him take over.
Thank you and good evening. The first article of the special town meeting warrant amends the general fund budget. This is a planned amendment. It will take free cash, which was not available at the annual town meeting, and apply it in a way that's consistent with the select board's free cash policy. In addition, we'll be making adjustments to certain departmental budgets that are in line with the select board's priorities for public services. First of all, we're gonna be supporting all the spending that we agreed to at the annual town meeting. There's no budget cutting going on, program cutting in this revised budget. We have some contract obligations that need to be funded. We have three departments where there are transitions. The human resources department, which is new, apparently we're going through some successful interviews right now, so we expect that person to be joining our team very shortly. Senior services, we had a replacement, which we have just successfully completed. And then we have a planned retirement inspection services. So those, those budgets have to be adjusted in order to take into account those changes. We have some reorganization of the administrative support in town hall for human resources, board of health and the town hall. We also have the reorganization of divisions within the DPW to enhance services, building maintenance, cemetery maintenance and highway operations. And then because we got a AAA bond rating, the amount of interest that we had expected to pay in the annual town meeting can now be redeployed because of our lower interest rate to pay down principal, and that's about $52,000. So that would be saving money twice, that we will be able to spend less on interest now, and we can pay down more principal, so that's less interest that will be paid later. So that's Article 1. Article 2 will handle the enterprise fund budgets. There are three enterprise funds. There's Hadley Media, there's the water division, and there's the sewer division. And we are very much in the same ways with the general fund budget. We're using enterprise fund reserves to mitigate the impacts on those water and sewer rates, and we're making adjustments that are in line with the select board's priorities for public services, mainly contract obligations and increased services as required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for both water and sewer. Are there any questions on Articles 1 and 2? Then I will turn it over. I think the next person coming up is gonna be Luke Keegan.
Every fall we try to trans, every town meeting, rather, we transfer money from unproductive articles where the project is done and the funds are no longer needed, a little bit of surplus. We have two types of articles. One are cash articles, and then the other ones are borrowing authorization. So, we can return $3,910 of cash back to the original buckets from which this was, this came. And for borrowing authorization, we can return $17,838.76. This helps clean up the chart of accounts and reduces the amount of reporting that we have to do to the SEC for borrowing that's no longer needed. So this is a House Keegan article, has no impact upon tax rates, sewer rates, water rates or any other rates. All right, now, Miss Keegan.
Okay, Article 4. This is something that should be familiar to those of you who've come to town meeting before. This is an article to transfer monies into the capital stabilization fund. This is still under review by the finance committee and the select board. The amount is going to be determined once we have a final certification of free cash by the Department of Revenue, which we're hoping to have soon. But the purpose of the article is to maintain a capital stabilization account for future capital needs. So this, there's no impact on taxes or utility rates in this regard.
Okay, Article 5 is the fun one always at a special town meeting here. It's our capital authorization for the year. So I guess I will just run through all these items. I don't know if everyone has the handout, but I'm looking at Article 5, and we'll go through them. I can kind of pause between them, and if you have a question, maybe just raise your hand and we can address it right then instead of waiting until the end of all of them. So, basically, let's see. So, so I'll just start them off. So the first one, first two are from the water reserve fund, so these are water related. We have fire and water hydrant markers, as well as the DPW Mount Warner well field assessment. Then, Hadley Media, we have Hadley Media equipment, $15,000. That would come out of the Hadley Media Reserve Fund. Now we are, have several here in which we would be borrowing within the levy. So for these items, we would be purchasing them, but borrowing within the levy, so there would be no impact on taxes. That's, as things go off our level of borrowing, we can borrow against new items. So that would be these items. So the first one is select board computers, but really that's town hall computers, $5,750. We have a police cruiser, that's a new one, it's $58,000. I believe it's a hybrid. So that's kind of a new, exciting thing this year. We have police cruiser cameras. So these would be, we received a grant from the state for police body cameras. Now, this would be for all the police cruisers in Hadley to have cameras as well. So police could wear body cameras as well as having them in the cruisers. Then we have one that's, that's kind of standard, police parts, ammunition and training. This is one that comes up every, every year or two, every three years, sorry.
Why isn't that in the budget?
Because it is a capital item, and that's how we do capital. It's just our standard way of doing it. Kind of the way it's always been done. I think it's a good question, but that's just kind of the way it's always been done, having those items in there.
It's been useful life over wanting to.
Chief, do you have anything you can say to that? Why this is in capital as opposed to the operating budget?
The first time that I put it in, I was just told to put it in capital. It was over the $10,000 mark, so that's where we put it.
Yeah, which that would make sense if it's over that $10,000, then it goes to capital. So, proceeding on here, borrowing within the levy. Oh, another question, I'm sorry.
You broke down.
Can you go to the mic real quick? Because it'll pick it up on Hadley Media. It's just, I think, is that our only mic right there, John?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, just come over here real quick, I'm sorry. Just trying to get a workout in, that's.
I'm not having my workout.
And then just say, you can just say your name and.
Sure. My name is Jim Wallace, I'm playing Middle Street.
Okay, yeah.
In cabin, obviously. Breaking down each of those items, police parts, parts ammunition and training, do they exceed $10,000 each? I don't think so.
Yeah.
And in my experience, things like parts and ammunition typically is, are consumables and would be considered capital. Definitions may be different here, but I'm just used to those things being consumables and not capital.
Yeah, yeah, that's a point well taken. So, next item, if that's it for the ammunition. We have fire OSHA equipment, $25,000. This is, you know, it's a new that fire and police departments have to comply with OSHA, so this is capital items related to complying with OSHA in the, in the fire station and on the fire trucks. Then we have DPW gas pump repairs, $30,000. DPW locks at town hall, $20,668. This would be a new key system to get into town hall and be able to track who's going in and out, kind of more of an electronic system instead of a key that God knows how many people have. So, trying to work on security.
Why is that under DPW?
DPW is, is building maintenance. Go ahead.
My name's Martin Vega. So in the upgrades to town hall, they're gonna install an elevator?
There is an elevator there.
There's one elevator there, it's a left.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be upgraded.
Yeah. There, no, we're not installing, we don't have that in the plan right now.
Okay.
Elevator installed.
Just asking, thank you.
Yeah. Then, still borrowing within the levy, the school parking lot. This is paving a portion of the parking lot. This is for the school Hopkins Academy, going east out of the parking lot, kind of from the parking lot up to Middle Street, paving that portion. Then we have board of health IT. This is some computers and I believe software for the board of health. Town hall counters. This is continuing with the slight renovation we did with town hall, adding some counters, probably in the assessor's office. And I don't know if we're replacing them in the collector's office? Does that encompass that? Then we have town hall basement conditioned room. This is to provide more storage space at town hall that we can store things in the basement, and they'll be conditioned, so it'll be low humidity and those kind of things. Then we have the, now we're moving on to the dead excluded borrowing. So, these items require a two-thirds majority vote at town meeting, and then they will go to a ballot vote. And that ballot vote would be, I believe now, when would we have that? January, so it would be 90 days from town meeting. So it would be next year before we'd have the official ballot vote on these items. First one is the fire, and these are dead excluded, so basically these would have, these would add to the overall tax rate. So, an increase in taxes to afford these. First thing is the fire emergency generator, $105,000. This is a replacement of the existing generator at the Hadley Public Safety Complex and would be, benefit both police and fire. Then we have the file, fire first vehicle extrication equipment, AKA the jaws of life. That would be replacing our current jaws of life as well as airbags that the fire department uses to move cars and that kind of thing. On here as well, we have DPW double drum compactor. This is a, last year we voted in to have a hot box to fix the roads, all the potholes and that kind of thing. This would be an accessory to that, let's say, where we could roll those areas and fix the roads as needed. Then we have DPW mower for the common. I believe this is just kind of replacing what we have, it's at the end of its useful life. Then for the school, we have a new school bus for $120,000. Then we have school IT technology for $100,000. And that would be for computers, the, I forget what they're called, not whiteboards anymore, but the boards that have the interface with computer and all that kind of stuff. Smartboards?
Yeah.
Thank you. Then we are looking at borrowing from sewer receipts, and so, these items would be voted on and then dead exclusion? No, just a pure town meeting vote?
Paid for out of sewer receipts.
Oh, paid for out of sewer receipts, but it would be borrowing, not just a straight pay for it.
Christian?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, sure.
Edwin, Edwin went to school, 116 Stockbridge. The one, two, three, four, five, six items that you just mentioned that require dead excluded, what's the difference between exclusion? what's the difference between exclusion and excluded? Yeah, that's just a typo?
I think that's just a typo, yeah.
What, what, what does that do to my tax rate?
We have those numbers, do you have those, David? Sure.
First one is for $105,000 for the emergency generator at the public safety complex. An emergency generator that we have now dates back to 1993. It's original with the building, it's old, it's failing, we don't have parts for it, can't get parts for it. So, this is a high priority of the fire department and the police department. Borrowing for a five-year period, the average single-family home is expected to pay $7.50 per year for five years.
What about percentage?
And the percentage would be 1.8%.
That, that's just for the generator?
That's just for the generator. Moving right along, $35,000 for the jaws of life. Again, a five-year borrowing. $2.50 for the average single-family household. And that works out to 0.6%. So, less than a penny.
Is that per year or...?
Per, per year, for five years. And by the way, the, by 2019, average single-family household is valued at $324,900. So, the double drum compactor is $60,000, five-year borrowing. That's expected to cost the average single-family household $4.28 for five years per year. And again, that is 0.1% increase. The mower for the town common, $30,000. $2.14 for five years. And that's 0.5%. School bus, $120,000. Borrowing for five years, it's expected to cost the average single-family household $8.57 per year. And that's point, that's 2%. I think that's 2%, that's 2%. Sorry, sometimes the decimals throw me off. The IT debt exclusion, $100,000. $7.14 per year for five years. And that's 0.17%. All right, see, I told you I had problems with decimals. 1.7%, thank you. Thanks for catching me.
And that's a cost per year, 1.7% per year?
Per year, for five years.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the sewer borrowing would be within the sewer rates and that would not impact the taxes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Christian, I think you...
Okay, any more questions on those?
You're taking, taking in the information?
Yeah, 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 okay. Yep. So, now moving on, borrow from sewer receipts. So, what was the term borrowing on these? Was it five years? Well, so five years out of sewer receipts. First one is DPW expansion of sewer plant capacity study for $50,000. So, it's a study to look at the plant capacity. Then we have $30,000 for seal coat sewer plant road surfaces. And this is some maintenance that needs to be done to the facility. And then we have a new truck for water. Afford F-350 for $90,000 and that would be borrowed from water receipts.
That's over five years.
Is the truck five or seven? Five, five.
Thank you.
Question?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Christian, you guys have been working hard, Towne's try, you've been working hard?
Do you mind scumming up here?
Is this Mike working?
That one is working.
Town Hall's been working hard to get departments to do, to do multiple-year capital budgets. So, are these all in alignment with the capital budgets? Are these sort of the things that come along unexpectedly or without planning and have been covered?
Yeah, 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 no, that's a good question. A lot of these were expected. I know especially the generator, that's been one that's been on there for a couple of years and we've been expecting that. I would say some of the DPW stuff might be a little bit unexpected, but we have a new director. So, you know, different ways of doing things. There was a capital plan, but just different approach to it, so adjusting that accordingly. But most of the items were expected, I would say. And we did trim down, you know, the requests as well in the capital committee so that we were, we thought this was a reasonable number. And I think we were pretty happy with where we ended up with these requests. Yep. Any other questions? Oh, capital plan is posted online too, if you'd like to look that up. Okay, so Article Six, I lost my sheet, who's next? I think it's David, Phil? Okay. I won't read the article, but I'll give you a little bit of background on why this is back on town meeting floor. The Select Board has been working to sell North Hadley Village Hall for probably more than a decade or at least figure out what to do with North Hadley Village Hall. We, at our last Select Board meeting, we voted unanimously actually to sell it to Mr. Ronmus here, a Hadley resident, for redevelopment. As part of that transaction, we had to, basically, nobody wanted North Hadley Village Hall without the associated ball field next to it. It greatly limits what can be done on the site. So, ideally, and we're waiting on Town Council for a final opinion on this, but ideally, we'd like to sell the ball field while maintaining Article 97 protections on that ball field. Meaning that although the ball field will be in private hands, it will be protected as recreational space and stay open as green space. So, that's our primary goal as a Select Board. Plan B would be to have to petition the state legislature to remove the Article 97 protections from the ball field so that way the redevelopment could happen there at North Hadley Village Hall. Mr. Ronmus has agreed to leave it open and even possibly move it into Chapter 61B protections if that was required at some point down the line, so that way it could be preserved as green space. So, this is kind of something to have in our back pocket if we need to go to the state legislature in order to make the redevelopment plan happen. Can you come to me?
Randy Iser. Is it possible, if, if any of this works out with the state or whatever, to sell a minimal amount of the land with the building that would satisfy the purchasers' needs and keep the rest of the land open as it currently is so that, you know, people will be more, more satisfied with that end result?
So, I will say that under the plans that we kind of approved and moved forward with last week, the entire parcel was included in that, in that plan in order to make things work. But this gives us permission to remove all of the Article 97 protections. I think that if, and correct me, if we only had to remove a portion of that to make something work or petition to say move 10, remove 10 feet of that or some portion of that in order to make the project work, I think that's something we consider. I'm not speaking for the rest of them, but I think it's something we'd consider. But in order to have the flexibility to make this transaction happen, I think we need the authorization just to have that ability to remove the Article 97 protections.
Denise Farsta, can I ask the zoning board a question? Is that allowed?
Plant board?
Plant board? People, okay, cool. I've never been to one of these, so I don't know how it works.
Not here to debate this.
Yeah.
No. Based on the amount of apartments that are to go into this building, how much parking do they need? And will we need to cut into the Article 97 land to have the appropriate amount of parking?
Build the wire from the planning board. We don't have a specific residential parking requirement. So, that is something that would probably have to be negotiated out when the developer, the proposed property owner goes to get his variance, which he will need. That would be from the zoning board of appeals. The building could be converted to two dwelling units. He proposes converting it to three. He will need a variance to do that. And presumably, as part of the variance process, the CBA will work out how much parking is required to support three apartments. But bylaw is quiet on that.
Alan Wyberg, 208 Bay Road. First of all, I'm thrilled that at this point where it actually is a possibility of saving the hall. And, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Ronmus for coming up with a creative idea. My only concern is on the Chapter 97 ball field. In my understanding of, of the need for him to have some control or use or ownership of that, is the apartment for, not the apartments, but for these occasional music venues, which is great. I'm all for that, it's wonderful. My only concern is the church also uses the ball field for parking. And it would, to me, it would, it would only fear things to have some arrangement. I'm sure it can be worked out, but I just want to highlight that whatever arrangement this is, whether he owns it, whether we own it, that we continue to allow the church to, for, for parking for their events as well. And I think if that all fits together, it'll be wonderful. Thank you for the time.
I won't speak for Mr. Ronmus, but I'll say that what was presented to the Select Board was that they'd be willing to work out some sort of agreement with the church and to keep the area open for outdoor use, for recreational use, whether it's picnic tables or grills or something along those lines, what was mentioned. Okay. Article Seven. This is granting a conservation restriction to Kestrel for the 336 acres off of Bay Road and Trimmera Road. A little bit of background on this, this has been in the works for probably eight months or so. We had a group of, I think it was eight people from the town to work with, with Kestrel and Conservation Commission as well to negotiate the terms of this conservation restriction. What activities would be permitted, what activities would be prohibited. We had a wide range of political and recreational opinions in this group. And this is what we came up with. Basically, this is a conservation restriction that will take the politics out of what uses are permitted on this land indefinitely. So, under the current arrangement, whatever Select Board that is up here at the time could permit or prohibit different activities on this land. Under this new arrangement, the conservation restriction clearly lays out what is allowed on that land forever. So, regardless of what political or recreational opinions are up here, if something is stated in this conservation restriction that's allowed, we can't prohibit it or the other way around.
Are you allowed to tell us what is allowed?
I'll give you a broad overview, it's pretty long. We'll have a handout at, at town meeting to go into details. But basically, snowmobiling on designated snowmobile trails, hiking, mountain biking, hunting, fishing, basically any, any recreate, bird watching, any of those recreational uses that are, that are typical. Also reserves the, the use of the town water facilities that are on the property, the reservoirs, pipes, things like that, that it doesn't inhibit the town from conducting water operations in any way. It allows logging, if at some point we want to do that under Forestry Management Plan. Actually, if I could have Paul come up and kind of, real quick, from, just to, Paul from... Yep, just from Kestrel Trust, just to kind of hit anything I missed.
I think, I think David covered it.
Why don't you tell everybody out in the world what Kestrel Trust is all about? You know, some people may not know.
Okay. I'll let Paul actually talk about what Kestrel Trust is, so I don't...
So, we're, we're the local land trust and we conserve land throughout the valley, including Cadley. We, we both own land and we hold conservation restrictions on land. So, in this case, you would be holding a conservation restriction on the land. And we work with, we work with towns, we work with the state, we work with the federal government to make that happen through grants and by raising dollars and, and for the means.
So, just to be clear, this land remains in town ownership. We're not selling the land, we're just granting a conservation restriction to Kestrel. And Paul, did I miss any of the major activities that are allowed or prohibited from...?
No, I think you captured them all. It's, you know, a wide range of recreational uses, along with sustainable forestry, the emergency use of the reservoirs up there for emergency water supplies. The town needs to use them for that purpose. And, you know, there's some other rights that the town can put in a, a paved, paved universally accessible trail if they wanted to, they could convert, you know, put some community gardens up there. So, there's a, there's a lot, a lot of possibility. And the land's really being used for those purposes right now, a lot of those purposes right now anyway. So, this guarantees that the public can continue to use the land for those purposes indefinitely, regardless of whatever future integration of Select Board or of town politics. Yeah, it allows us to also leverage money to protect more land up there, do more conservation through state grants.
Any further questions?
So, health insurance is Article Number Eight. The Hampshire Franklin Group Insurance Trust was able to contain Hadley's health insurance costs in the amount of $93,800 in FY19. Not only did we achieve these cert savings, but the OPF actually used this figure in determining future liability costs. Under Massachusetts regulations, we are mandated to share a quarter of the savings with union employees, non-union employees and active retirees. This shared portion can be in the form of a reduction of health insurance premiums that would be otherwise paid by the employees and retirees or as an underwriting for health promotion, events and trainings. The exact distribution of these funds is subject to discussion with bargaining units, non-union staff and representatives of the active retirees. Mitigation sharing is governed by the provisions of Chapter 801. A copy can be found on a link that we have there. So, this is what we're doing. We're transferring free cash, $22,234 and transfer $590 from water reserves and transfer $626 from sewer reserves to fund the health insurance premiums mitigation.
Any questions?
The next one is just Hadley Kids, Inc., and I don't know if the school department wants to speak to that? Do you want to say?
For several years, Hadley Kids, Inc., a nonprofit organization, operated our after-school, or its after-school program, and was completely independent of the school department and run by a nonprofit 501(c)(3). The nonprofit Hadley Kids, Inc., their board of directors, voted to dissolve their, their corporation, or their nonprofit organization, if the school department could or would be willing to take over operating the after-school program. Initially, this program was going to be run by Park and Rec, but it turned out that we're going to do it through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and through the school department. And they have reserves from their organization that they would like to gift for the specific purpose of enhancing and expanding out-of-school programming. So that would be before-school care, after-school care, potentially summer care as an extension of this. So this is for out-of-school time programming, and it's a requirement that the funds be gifted to, that a gift such as this is voted on at the town meeting. It is roughly, I believe, about $100,000. They haven't completed the dissolution process, there'll be some legal things that would need to happen, and still, but I believe it's roughly $100,000.
And then our next four articles are CPA articles. I don't know if anyone's here from CPA to talk to them tonight? Edwin, do you, do you want to speak to them?
I don't know, but I've heard you, but I've tried.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I can read them, but I didn't know if you guys wanted to speak to them. Go to the mic, Kirk.
Edwin Matusko, Vice Chair of CPA Committee. Andy Morris Friedman, the chairman, was unable to attend tonight. He asked me if I could fill in, I will try to. That's all I can do, I will try. Article, Article 10 is a transfer of $25,000 from the Historic Set Aside to the Hadley Cemetery Committee for the preservation and restoration of historic gravestones in Plainville Cemetery. If there's anybody that wants to speak to that one, if it's okay with you, the petitioner can address it.
That's fine.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I ask questions?
Hi, I'm Alan Weinberg, I'm chair of the cemetery committee, can you hear me? Alan Weinberg, Chair of the cemetery committee. So we have five historic town cemeteries in Hadley, dating back over 300 years old. Last year, we received money from CPA to fix 50-plus gravestones up in the Hockenheim Cemetery. That work's almost done now, 99% done. And we also received $12,000 to do a study of the other four cemeteries to see what needed to be done as far as restoring the gravestones. We received those studies, and we're going to, who are asking, we have asked the CPA for money to do two of the cemeteries. Plainville, we're asking for $25,000 to do 45 stones, and Old Hadley, 133 stones at a cost of $82,000 of CPA money. So that's what we're asking the CPA to prove that. Do you want me to talk about the stone fence as well?
Go ahead.
So the other article is the $5,000 for a study of the Hockenheim Stone Fence, which isn't bad, just repaired, it's a, it's also historic, it's a WPA project, built it back in the 30s. And we need to figure out the best way of repairing and replacing that wall, so we want to hire some professionals to guide us through that process before we ask for money to fix that, that wall. So those three things are cemetery projects for this coming year. I will say that next year, we'll be asking from CPA money to do the last two, which are in, in Russellville. Okay? Any questions? Thanks.
That was an overview of the articles for the cemeteries, and we have an article from the Historic Set Aside to the Hadley Building Committee for Emergency Repairs to Preserve and Restore Historic Russell School Roof. And further, if the funds are not, oh, yeah, that's just a boilerplate article to put in so that you've got to use the money before it expires. I don't know if there's anybody from the select board that wants to, or from the building committee that wants to address these articles. That's what they're for.
All right, so Article 14 changes the water rules, or the water bylaws, to make, to allow a $50 charge if the DPW has to, or the water department has to do a manual meter reading after a certain amount of time. For the most part, all the meters in town are remotely read by radio frequency, they can be done from the street, and there's no need to access properties. What we are finding is there's a small number of people that have not allowed their meters to be changed out to modern technology, and it's quite expensive to send water department personnel out to the houses. We're talking multiple hours of their time because of scheduling conflicts and people not showing up to allow access to the, to the homes. So this will make it, allow a $50 charge, fee to be charged. Now, we, we have a article for the planning board, Planning Stormwater General. Would you like to speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm Bill Dewire from the planning board. So, I know you've been wondering what MS4 stands for. Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. What we are being asked to do, well, we actually, we, it's a two-part article. We've had a zoning article to, for stormwater management in place for several years, and that was our first approach to complying with MS4. MS4 is a Environmental Protection Agency program that is being applied to all communities that are basically in the watershed of Long Island Sound. So anybody whose drainage gets down to Long Island Sound is being asked to clean up their act by EPA. And in conjunction with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, we have been presented with a proposed bylaw change. What we are doing here is in two parts. We are adopting a new general bylaw, and, and that is to replace the current zoning bylaw. Because MS4 deals with post-construction activities and deals with, it has a fairly broad scope, it doesn't lend itself to being one-and-done planning board review at the construction phase. So we're taking out of the zoning bylaw, we're putting it into the general bylaw. There are, I think are about six pages of definitions and bylaw language, in addition to which there will be 30-plus pages of regulations that the planning board will adopt going forward. But basically, there is no fundamental change with what we're doing, the structure of what we're doing. We're not removing erosion and sediment control protection, we're just moving it to another part of the town bylaw set.
If I saw the needle dig ditch?
If the Conservation Commission will let you do it, probably. This really doesn't extend the reach of the zoning bylaw. It just takes what was in the zoning bylaw under Chapter 40A and moves it into the general bylaw. So that, that's fun, that's the fundamental change in it. There are a list of exemptions in the text of the bylaw. But again, it also says explicitly that this is for a different purpose than conservation, and nothing in this bylaw will override or undermine the Conservation Commission's mandate, which comes under a different law.
Do you want to do that, that planning board article too? Or is that the same?
Article 17?
Fifteen and 16, were they?
That's, that was fifteen and 16.
Oh, that was, okay, all right, thank you. Okay. So the next and final article here is our Senior Housing Overlay Math Extension. I don't know if petitioner wants to say something regarding that. And please remember, if you have a question, feel free to ask a question, just not town meeting where we're going to speak for or against this project right now. So. Is, is, do you, do you want to ask, or want me to ask? Joyce is wondering if Mr. Dion is here tonight?
He is not here.
Okay.
So we would need to have permission from the floor to speak since either one of them.
Right, I think for town meeting, you've got to petition the town moderator to move. I think this is just a public call.
Well, for tonight, yeah, I think you should just speak to it real quick, it's a public forum, and then, I agree, on town meeting night, you know, should be here, so, but.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, so just, yeah, Mr. Dion will be here for town meeting, but just for context and information, so this is to extend Northerly, the senior housing overlay district, onto a parcel of land, it's about a nine-and-a-half acre parcel of land owned by Donald Dion. The underlying zoning district is agricultural residential. It's the one on this map that large, it's this parcel right here. This is Middle Street, and it's this parcel right here, about nine-and-a-half acres. According to the GIS, the zoning layer on your GIS map, it actually looks like the senior housing overlay extends to about here. I don't know if that's just a function of the GIS map, or if it actually extends to that point, or if it actually terminates at the bike path. So that's the rail trail right there. But the warrant article is seeking by two-thirds vote to extend Northerly, so the existing senior housing overlay district follows this rail trail, the bike path, it's to extend it Northerly onto this parcel of land. And there have been some discussions about the type of development that would occur on that land if it did pass at town meeting.
Such as?
Such as no more than 28 single-family homes, so it'd be a condominium similar to East Street Commons. And I think that the petitioner and the developer would both be willing to put that in writing and agree to it. You know, I, I think something similar happened with Ciaglo's, Ciaglo's property with the Lowe's development, and there was an agreement with the town that if the zoning amendment did happen, then a certain project would be built. And so I think similarly here, both the petitioner and the developer would be willing to enter into that agreement.
What is the intended sale price of this property?
Good question. From what Barry has said, probably similar to East Street Commons. If he can do it for less, he will, so probably 400. Sure, sure, I think the average over at East Street Commons is $440,000. So something probably between 375 and 475, I think, would be the target over there.
Would you call that affordable housing?
It is not qualified in the subsidized housing inventory, so it wouldn't be the term, the legal term of affordable housing. I think it may be deemed affordable, because if you, if you know the East Street Commons project, they're all sold out. And so there are folks who find that affordable if they're, if they're buying it. If they were all sitting on the market, I would say, no, it's not affordable. Sure, do you want me to just take people in order?
Yeah, just come up to the mic, maybe, and state your name. Appreciate it.
Alan Weinberg, Bay Road. Two questions. One is, has there been any thought about screening from Newton Lane, screening the properties with the hedge or whatever fencing? And the other is, I don't know if there's, if you know the incident this over the planning board does, whether or not duplexes could be allowed, you know, instead of just single family, duplexes, which can be more affordable.
Sure, so I guess to take it in reverse order, yes, duplexes are allowed. I think the developer had seen in the East Street Commons project that they weren't that desirable. There are several over there, but folks typically, most of the purchasers are those folks looking to downsize but are used to their own space, and so having a single family allows exclusive use areas around the perimeter, and it just feels more like a standalone home. Not something, I'm not saying that he won't consider it if there's a market demand for it, and I think it's market-driven quite a bit. And to answer your first question about screening, yes. So, not to get too far in the weeds, but the proposal would be to put a berm all the way around the property, and to screen on this side of the property as well with a, it might be a three or four-foot-high berm, and then plant on the top of the berm, so on this side here, there'd be four-foot-high arborvitae's on top of the berm, and, and the berm would go in first, before any of the construction would take place. And, and the idea would be to keep the construction away, you know, from these properties, I think we're looking at 50 feet is, the developer has been trying to talk with the neighbors to find out what would be amenable. And then to continue the berm around here. This is, maybe Mr. Dewire will take it away from me, but this is, we will ultimately, if this is approved, there is still another approval process, which is a site plan review special permit with the planning board.
And just let me ask, there's currently on East Street what looks like a berm, as you would describe it, faces Route 9, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think, I think the berm is similar to what we're talking about. I think the berm here would be, would have more plantings on it. There was a slide that we had shown, or there was a cross-section that we had shown in the neighborhood meeting, that showed the planting on each side of the berm and on top of the berm. So frankly, I think it is more substantial than what you'd see at East Street Commons.
Okay. The current owner of the property is?
Current owner of the property is Donald Dion.
So Donald Dion is the petitioner, correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. The other question I have is, in the current senior overlay, does anyone here know the approximate number of acres that that covers? Yeah, from Spuce Hill to the bridge, and then a little ways up Bay Road, is what I see as the present senior overlay.
We can have that information at the town meeting.
Okay, I'm just curious, because there's obviously a senior area right now. And I think anything else would be speaking for a comment about this, so I think I'll let the rest go. I may have another question.
We can pause it, we'll go for second.
Okay. Thank you.
So Bill Dewire from the planning board. I do want to clarify that what Town Meeting is talking about is not directly the, the design of any potential senior housing that might go on this site. Town Meeting is being asked to rezone a piece of land at the request of the property owner. Town Meeting is being asked to rezone a piece of land at the request of the property owner. Presumably, after the property owner secures the rezoning, he may then enter into a contract with Mr. Roberts or someone else to sell the property subject to permitting. Then, the design comes to the Planning Board for a special permit for senior housing. Anything Mr. Roberts may have to say about design is based on his thoughts for what he would do if he is the successful bidder for this. But you're not approving Mr. Roberts' project. You are approving a change of use for a parcel of land. So I think it's important just to keep those distinct, that to get off and talking about berms and screening, you're really a little off-track there. We want to keep it on that this is a change of use for a parcel of land. That's what Town Meeting is talking about. The individuals who are within notice circle for the special permit have the particular interest in screening hours of construction, things like that. Town Meeting as a whole really doesn't get involved in that level of permitting, because, you know, I live, if I weren't on the Planning Board, I live five miles away, I really don't have much to say about what happens on that space as an individual. So that's why it's not really a town meeting issue, what the design is going to be like. Town meeting issue is what the use is going to be.
Joan McBrugger, 21 Merawatt Drive. I do have a question about the senior zoning as it stands right now. Exactly how do we decide on where the zoning stops so that we're now deciding to extend
After lengthy discussions, including requests from people pretty much all over town to have the zone extend pretty much everywhere, the Planning Board recommended, and Town Meeting approved, that the senior housing overlay district would be congruent with the Village Center Overlay District. And there are a couple of things that went into that. Because these are, structures are clustered together, this is the only situation in which we allow residential condominiums. We were concerned that they had to be on sewer rather than having a massive septic system. We also thought it would be good to have the housing located nearer the center of town, where there is better access to public transit than there is, say, where I live, five miles north of here. We also worked on a philosophy of, let's roll this out, let's see how this develops. And if we do choose to expand it, if there is demand, we'll talk about expanding it. We do say, in addition to the Village Center Overlay, that you can have, use existing structures wherever located. We did that thinking that, gee, maybe North Hadley Hall could be converted into senior housing. The first, I'd say, four years, maybe five, of having the bylaw in place, we had zero interest from anyone. When we were, before we adopted the bylaw, we had four or five potential senior housing developers, and Mr. Roberts was not one of them. These are four or five others who were actively participating and trying to influence where the housing was going to be allowed. But that's the long story about why we picked the area we picked. It was already defined as the Village Center Overlay, and it seemed to be a good place to put more housing, because historic development density was a little tighter than it is now.
You can stop me, it's controversial, but it sounds like this might be in the spirit of the original zoning, it's just an extension.
What, I will agree that this is not, this would not be considered spot zoning. This is an extension, this is a viable, in that sense, as an extension of the original area. Whether it is something that convinces Town Meeting or not, we'll see.
So I just wanted to clarify, there will be at town meeting a map of the actual overlay district in the town, so that people can see where this zone is on both sides of Route 9.
Is that something you guys are planning on, what are you guys planning on having at town meeting for presentation, anything?
Yes.
You are?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, because I hear that, you know, there's lots of land for this kind of thing in town.
The zoning, zoning map's available online.
But it's tiny.
Oh, it's, it's expanding.
Is it at Town Hall?
Yes, and Billy Inspector's on it.
Billy Inspector. Okay, thank you. And what is, what is a GSI map? What's the, that's a government?
Geographic Information System, so if you Google "Hadley GIS."
GIS.
GIS. Then they'll bring you, then there's a layer.
Yeah, you can go to the Hadley website and assessors maps.
Throw the assessors off, throw the assessors page.
Yeah, I want to look on my monitor.
It's really good.
Okay. Okay.
A question arises. The property is going to be sold, yes or no?
It's not up for debate right now.
Okay, but, no, what is up for debate is the extension of the senior zoning district and the density of the buildings in that district. So, the question that I have is, if it is allowed and we have a closer density, what will that do to the infrastructure, the sewer and water of the Town of Hadley? Is that going to overflow it? Are we going to kick into something else that we're going to have to expand on later on? So that's the question that I have, is what is it going to do to the infrastructure of Town of Hadley? You mentioned that, or Bill mentioned that it's going to be all on sewer?
Yes.
So will that have a tendency to kick us over a limit where we're going to have to do something later on, or in very near future, to expand the sewer system to accommodate other development in town?
Having more sewer users would help, and there'd be impact fees related to that, but I don't know, plant capacity-wise, well, how much, if we have 28 new houses?
We can get that.
We could get that information for town meeting? Yeah. Why don't we get that information and we can have that available?
Thank you.
Or even, yeah. Any further questions? Okay. And I have a motion to adjourn. Or wait, you need something? Damn. Okay, let's wrap it up here. Let's not forget, special town meeting, November 7, 2019, 7 o'clock, right here. Anything else? Yeah. Speak, you can use democracy to speak out then. Then we will allow you to say whatever you want, within reason. Motion to adjourn.
That's fine.
All those in favor?